Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Abington Board of Selectmen meeting, November 13th, 2023, time being 6:30 PM. I would like to call the Board of Selectmen open session to order. And as tradition, as we always do, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we have no moments of silence for our agenda. We'll go right into public announcements. The first public announcement is thank you to the families and individuals who take pride in Abington by adopting an island on or bucket at various intersections from May 1st through the first fall frost. The adopters purchase the plants, waters, and weed the areas throughout the season. Thank you for helping to beautify the town. For public announcements, Mr. Donovan?
Just make comment the fact that last Wednesday, the Veterans Agent held a little gathering for the veterans in town at the Council on Aging. Some of the selectmen were there, and department heads and so forth, and it was kudos to Adam Gunn, who put it together in concert with Amy Barry at the Council on Aging. It was a very well-fared affair that was put on. Additionally, we had the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade on Saturday that was actually in Rockland, and I believe next year it will be, Abington will be the host. So that's all I...
All right, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Public announcements, Ms. Jesper?
I have two. The first one, this year, the Giving Tree will be at the Abington Senior Center. In the past, it was, you could drop off gifts for homebound seniors at the police station and also at the Council on Aging. Right now, we are working with a program with our high school seniors, and they are volunteering the first two weekends in December to open Saturday and Sunday to have gifts able to be dropped off. And I want to thank everyone who volunteers. This is a really important program for the Senior Center. We've been doing it there for the last 10 years. It does help our seniors who are alone, our homebound seniors, and it does brighten their day to get a gifter in Christmas. So if you can donate a non-perishable, non-rap gift, and if you need, that would be appreciated. And if you want any more information, you can call the Senior Center, (781) 982-2145. And my next one is, Abington Thanksgiving Game is being hosted in Whitman Hansen at 10 o'clock. So come and show your Greenway pride and support your team, and especially Coach Kelleher.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Ms. Jesper. Mr. DiMaggio?
Yeah, I just have one. Next Friday, November 24th, at 8:00 PM, there's a Comedy Night fundraiser. It's going to be held over in Rockland at Article 15 Brewing Company, featuring Jerry Thornton and Craig Murphy. It's a great event. It's to support Law Enforcement Officers Support Foundation and the Start Me Another Car Foundation. If you know anything about it, you can go online to saveleos.org for more information or if you want to buy tickets. Comedy Night fundraiser next Friday, November 24th, 8:00 PM, www/saveleos.org. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. DiMaggio, Mr. Chapin?
No, sir.
All right, I do have a couple of public announcements. I want to extend my sincerest congratulations to the Abington High School cheerleading team for their amazing victory yesterday in earning the Massachusetts School Administrators Association Small Coed Self-Division Champions. Abington's cheerleaders always devote a lot of hours of hard work and persistence into their seasons. Our Abington cheerleaders will be bringing their fantastic talents to states soon. Congratulations to your Small Coeds Self-Division Championship. Abington is very, very proud of you, and keep up the amazing work, and good luck at states. We also, with the Health Department news, we are in the cold flu season, and the Abington Health Department is available for new appointments to get vaccinated from the flu. Protect yourself and your loved ones from the flu, and get vaccinated today. You can register to make an appointment with our certified Health Department team by going to the Health Department website at abington.gov/healthdepartment, and then clicking on that page if you would like to schedule a vaccine appointment. And please, and please click the blue highlighted that says click here. Abington residents can also call (781) 982-2119. For all, for all Health Department news, please follow the Abington Health Department Facebook page. And as always, you know, as the Health Department says, please be healthy, stay safe. And also, in something in relation to the special town meeting that we had in October, I do want to mention just some news. The town of Rockland, on November 7th, passed the new Southfield Redevelopment Authority, AKA the former Naval Air Base zoning changes. All three communities have now approved, Waymouth, Rockland, and Abington, of the new zoning changes, which thus means the SRA can now move forward with future plans, obtaining water and sewer for potential commercial, retail, industrial, and residential development, and, as always, preserving open space, as they have in their plan. I can't stress this enough. This is a huge, major win for Abington. Along with Abington's SRA liaison, and our board, and our Awesome Town Manager, we will continue to keep the public informed on all things former naval airbase. And lastly, I want to give a congratulations. Yesterday, we presented accommodation to an Eagle, a newly pinned Eagle Scout, Michael O'Leary. He did a project, he did his Eagle Scout project on Ladler Field to revitalize and restore the earnest him and Ladler plaque that is on Ladler Field, that it's named after, put up a new flagpole, and cleaned up, cleaned up the park. He did an absolutely fantastic job. So to Michael O'Leary, thank you, and thank you for your service. Next on our agenda is public comments. I will open it up to the public. Are there anything to be, anything to be heard from the public?
I would love to talk.
Sure, come on up. I should just state your name and address, please.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Ashley Cutter. I actually am from Summer Street in Rockland, right over the Abington line. My husband is Kevin Cutter, and I'm sure you have all read The Post by now. He's been a police saucer in Abington for the past 12 years. In July, he had filed for injured on duty after he went out FMLA, and we have not had any response since August 1st, when all the paperwork was turned in. The goalpost keeps being moved on him for what they want from him, to get this taken care of. And it just seems like there's a game being played with my husband's mental health, and that's really, really sad, when he's put a lot of time into this town. He's there for every family in this town for the last 12 years. He never not shows up for his job, and he shows up for everybody in this town. And now, when he needs something and his family needs something, you all turn your back, which is very, very sad. And then this post about mental health and claiming to end the stigma, but there's no help being offered. So I would just love to hear what you guys have to say about that. I'm sure there's going to be no opinion, but I would just love to know if you guys even knew what was going on, or how long this has been going on for, for him, and what my family's dealing with.
Ashley, as Chair of the Board, I want to express my appreciation for you coming up and speaking. However inconsistent with the longstanding practice that we do have with the town, we cannot comment on personnel matters that are currently in litigation. I know that's not what you want to hear.
Which keep, again, the goalpost keeps being moved in this litigation, and new things are being asked that probably shouldn't be asked for someone that's going through what he's going through for this town. So that's really, really sad.
Again, I wish I could comment more, but, you know, it's, in an effort to protect you and your family and your husband, we have to, we cannot comment on personnel matters.
Okay, so I think one thing that this town needs to do is stop saying that they're trying to end the stigma for police officers, because none of you are honoring that. And that's pretty sad for the people that serve this town and for the residents of this town where they are getting that type of service. So that's sad.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public?
Just the other four.
All right, thank you for being here. All right, hearing nothing, hearing, hearing no more. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is public appointments, time being 6:40 PM. We have the FY '24 Tax Classification Hearing.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, my name is Yolanta, and I am the Town Assessor. I will be doing the fiscal year '24 classification hearing for you tonight. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to determine the tax policy for the current fiscal year '24. Proposed future budgetary expenses and the potential for future development and growth are not relevant in determining whether the tax rate for this fiscal year is a single or a split rate. Every year, those present at our annual town meeting vote to approve the upcoming budget figures. The registered voters of Abington voted in April of '23 to approve the fiscal '24 budget. The money to fund the budget comes from multiple sources, like local receipts, revenues, and state aid. The remaining money comes from the levy. This is the amount of money a community can raise through real estate and personal property taxes. Twenty-two percent of commercial industrial properties are owned by people who live in Abington, residents. Classification hearing does not change the amount of levy which can be raised, amount of money which can be raised through the levy. A split rate will not increase revenue for the town. A split rate shifts some of the tax burden from all residential properties onto all commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts. Tax rates and valuations. Since you need to raise a fixed levy amount, the valuations and tax rates move in opposite directions. If the total town value increases, the tax rate will decrease. If the total town value decreases, the tax rate will increase. If overrides, capital exclusions or debt exclusions are approved per town ballot, it is likely that the tax rate and taxes will increase no matter what. And this is our outstanding debt schedule overview. We have the high school, the police station, the senior center, and the high school windows and doors. Eighty-seven point eight percent of the debt is for the high school purposes. Community Preservation Act. The CPA does not increase the tax rate. It is a separate surcharge. It does not go toward the payment of your real estate tax bills or the general fund. For fiscal year '23, the town collected approximately $484,686 in Community Preservation Classification. The Board of Selectmen hold a classification hearing each year to determine if the levy gets divided evenly through a single tax rate, or if the tax burden gets shifted between the classes. Here are the current percentages. Residential in the red is at eighty-nine point eight seven, commercial in the blue at seven point two seven, industrial in the green at point eight three, and personal property at two point oh one. This slide breaks down the previous slide to show that sixty-two percent of the entire town is comprised of single-family homes, and that seventy-four percent of the other all-class residential portion of the town is single-family homes. So the first seven classes in blue shades are all residential. Any split would barely impact the residential properties, where it would have a drastic negative impact on the commercial, industrial, and personal property. This slide shows the historical class percentages. So for fiscal '24, the residential percentage is eighty-nine point eight seven, commercial seven point two seven, industrial point eight four, and personal two point oh two. This has been the trend since 1989. L.A.'s seven shift. Should the selectmen choose to shift some of the burden to the CIP class, the shift may not be more than hundred fifty percent of the original burden. Given this restriction, our minimum residential share with max shift is eighty-four point eight one, and our maximum CIP share with max shift is fifteen point one eight. At the original limit, the share of the levy to be raised by each class would be as follows: residential being eighty-nine point eight seven, and CIP being ten point one two, with the levy share in the next column, and the proposed single tax rate would be thirteen point thirty-five. If we go to the maximum at one fifty, the maximal shift for the residential would be eighty-four point eight one, and CIP fifteen point one eight, with the residential rate being twelve sixty, and commercial being twenty point oh two. Fiscal year '23's tax rate is fourteen twenty-one. The proposed tax rate for fiscal '24 is thirteen thirty-five. That is a decrease of eighty-six cents. What about Proposition Two and a Half? Proposition Two and a Half indicates that the overall total taxes for the town cannot increase more than two and a half in a given year. But if the town has outstanding debt, which is shown on Slide Six, the overall tax can't and will go higher than two and a half percent. Proposition Two and a Half does not limit how much a single property's taxes can change. Here's the impact of the tax shifts. As you can see, the highest shift would result in commercial paying approximately fifty percent more in taxes, while the residential parcels would save around five point six So every seven cents, the residential goes down, the commercial would go up sixty-seven And here's some final bits on information. When determining values, we are governed by the Department of Revenue Regulations. We must analyze qualified sales from the last full calendar year and adjust accordingly. For fiscal year '24 values, we must use sales from calendar year '22. Property values get adjusted after the sales analysis each year. Property values are submitted and certified by the Department of Revenue each year. Property values may change as a result of building permits, visit, sales inspections, or random selection. The Department of Revenue requires us to try to visit every property at least once in a nine-year period. And in closing, the Board of Assessors voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen adopt a single tax rate with no small, commercial, or residential exemption.
Thank you. By the way, I'll bring it back to the Board. Are any questions? All right, so the Board of, so the Board of Assessors voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen adopt a single tax...
Correct.
Okay, as, as we have done numerous years.
Exactly.
We see, we see this a lot on social media, and I know a lot of residents have reached out to us, talking about why, why won't the town go to a split rate? We always hear from residents, and it's like, the, there's a big, they feel like the big burden is really on the residential tax base. Is there, explain to residents why we can't go down the road of having a split at this current time?
Because we do not have enough commercial. Like I showed in the, in the pies. It just shows we don't have enough commercial. And every, like I said, every seven cents, the residential would go down, the commercial would go up sixty-seven cents, and commercial would be paying twice as much. Therefore, some businesses might want to leave, and then we would have...
Have we seen, have other municipalities who have, who are similar to ours, have they seen, when actually they do a split tax rate, when they don't have the commercial, do they see businesses leaving? Because that's one of the things that we always hear from residents is, oh, that's just an old wives' tale.
Towns similar to our size have a single tax rate.
Okay.
It's mostly bigger cities like Quincy that have a split tax rate, because they have so much commercial that they can't do the split rate.
And I, and I know you've told us before that there are only, out of like Plymouth County, there are only like four or five municipalities that have a split tax rate.
Correct.
In order for Abington to go, maybe this is a loaded question, but in order for Abington to go to a split tax rate, what would we have to have our commercial, industrial base have to be?
Well, hold on. Just right here, impact of the shifts, this answers...
Do you know what other towns roughly with a split tax rate, what their percentages are?
I do not, but I can find out.
I feel like we had, do we have that before?
It's usually over fifteen percent, is what you start to think about it. We're usually, we're around seven, eight maybe.
Yeah.
So we're about, we're about halfway there.
Yeah.
With the number of empty storefronts in town, it would...
We're never going to fill them.
Could be devastating.
Yeah.
And only twenty-two percent of Abington residents own the commercial industrial.
Does, so thinking hypothetically, and granted, this is probably 12, 15 years out from now, because we just, we voted the new zoning changes for the SRA. Would, and maybe I'm getting a little too ahead of myself, but if, if we were able to have, build up a commercial base there, would that, at some point, we could look at the future, having a split rate?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'd be shocked if you ever saw Abington get to fifteen percent commercial, just the way that...
I mean, look at, it was, the highest we ever had was eleven, well, no, ever, but on this chart, eleven point five six percent, and that was 2014, almost a decade ago.
Yeah.
It's consistently gone down every year, and residential's consistently gone up every year.
In the long term, doing a split tax rate, would that ultimately then hurt the residentials, the residential tax rate down the line?
Well, I would have to do that calculation. Depends what the commercial, commercial, industrial value would be. I don't have those numbers at the moment, but I will give you the impacts of shifts and what it would be doing based on the values. I don't know what the values would be in 10, 15 years.
But, and if we, if we vote, if we approve the single tax rate tonight, so for FY '24, the, the rates will go down from FY '23?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right, are there any more questions?
Eighty-six cents.
Okay, eighty-six cents, awesome. Thank you.
That's the proposed.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments or questions from the Board?
No.
Any comments or questions from the audience? All right, hearing none. I will hear any, any motions from the Board.
I'll move, we stick with the single tax rate.
All right, there is a motion on the floor to stay with a single tax rate for Mr. Donovan. Is there a second?
No second.
All right, second amendment, Mr. Chapin. Any other motions to be heard? All right, hearing none, all in favor of keeping the tax rate, the single tax rate for FY '24. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Gets better every year.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you to the Board of Assessors for all their hard work into this. Thank you, and our, and our assessor's office, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
All right, next on our agenda is Action Discussion Items Town Manager Report.
The vacancy for the open position on the Board of Assessors has been officially posted on the town bulletin board and website. According to the town charter, anyone interested in filling the vacancy must apply within 10 days of the posting. Final date to submit is Thursday, November 23rd, Thanksgiving. So interested individuals can apply using the link on the website, or they can send a letter of interest to my attention here at Town Hall. And then ask this Board, along with the remaining members of the Board of Assessors, to make a decision on December 11th. It will be your next meeting.
Because it's a holiday. What time?
It does count.
Four thirty PM?
Four thirty PM?
Yep. Right after dinner. Yep. But you have all the way up until then. Something to talk about, something to talk about, Devin. As a reminder, by the way, there's still vacancies on the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board, so interested parties looking to volunteer can also do so with the link on the webpage, or by submitting a letter of interest to here at Town Hall. I've received many qualified applications in response to our request for individuals interested in serving on the new DPW and Fire Department Building Committee. That closes tomorrow at the end of the day, so I will make the selections and get notices out midweek. We are scheduling our first committee meeting and the project kickoff for next Monday. That will be posted, if it might already be posted.
Will that be recorded or on Abington Cam?
No.
Live or anything?
It won't be live.
But it'll be a public meeting.
It'll be a public meeting. Yep.
Scott? Well, anybody, are we considering any applications from the, anybody from the Fire Department for, to, to serve on the committee?
Considering any applications that were submitted to me, yes. I've been notified by DPW Director John Stone that MassDOT has awarded the town $350,000 for the reconstruction of the Center Ave Bridge. The funding will cover the full amount of the project, not nearly as invasive as our last bridge project, and will not likely require a re-enclosure. But when repairs begin, do expect some occasional wing closures or delays. We have an RFP out for our Memorial Bridge project, and we, I think I've already discussed this with you, this phase is to, is being funded through a $30,000 grant from Mass Historical, and $70,000 from CPA funds, and this will give us a scope of work and documents sufficient for bidding for construction. for bidding for construction. That construction's estimated right now to cost a million dollars, but we are hoping for some federal and state aid on that project.
A million dollars for the bridge?
One million.
Oh, no.
It's going to be nice. That's pretty, it's going to be huge.
I am pleased to announce that Abington's Public Health Nurse, Lindsay Wright, has received the Public Health Nursing Award for demonstrating exceptional dedication in carrying out the public health mandates of a municipal public health agency. She received this by the Massachusetts Health Officers Association. So congratulations to Lindsay. And finally, the town of Abington recently, actually today, we entered into an intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Hingham, Rockland, Norwell, Hanover, Cohasset, and Situate. The purpose of the agreement is to unite the towns in a study to research and verify the current and future water system demands for each respective jurisdiction. The study will further look into the infrastructure requirements for the communities to access MWRA water. The study's expected to take up to a year. At the end of the study, we'll reevaluate and decide whether we want to pursue connections to MWRA individually, jointly, or not at all. But we'll discuss that when the time comes, and that is it.
All right, any other questions from the Board?
Nope.
Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, hearing, all right, hearing none. I will entertain, I will entertain any motions to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, unanimous. The time being, 7:01, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen Meeting of November 13th, adjourned.